Okay, folks, the time being 7:06 and last time we checked, there was not a line outside. So we are going to begin by calling the special town meeting to order. I'll ask the town clerk to come forward to read the warning and the return.
To either of the constables of the town of Free Town, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Free Town who are qualified to vote in the elections and town affairs to meet at Aponoquit Regional High School, 100 Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, on Monday, the second day of June 2025 at 7:00 p.m. Then and thereto, act on the following articles. Vis warrant for the special town meeting, Town of Free Town, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Monday, June 2nd, 2025, 7:00 p.m., Aponoquit Regional High School, Robert C. Falcon Auditorium, 100 Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the following places: the Asonet Post Office, the East Free Town Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store in Asonet, the Free Town Town Hall, Free Town Communications Center, and Free Town Fire Rescue Station Number Three. Hear of, fail not, and make return of the original warrant with your doings thereon immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the town of Free Town, Massachusetts. Given under our hands and seal of the town of Free Town, this fifth day of May, Anno Domini 2025, signed, the Town of Free Town Board of Selectmen, Trevor R. Matthews, Jared C. Zager, Carlos A. Lopes. May 15th, 2025. To the town clerk, Town of Free Town, Massachusetts, I have this day posted attested copies of this warrant in the designated places described herein: in Asonet, the Asonet Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store, and the Free Town Town Hall; in East Free Town, the East Free Town Post Office, Fire Station Number Three, and the Free Town Communications Center. Signed, Scott M. Rose, Constable.
So we are doing the special town meeting right now, which if I'm not mistaken is the white warrant, I think. Yes, the white warrant. So you should have two warrants, a white and a purple. We're doing the white one right now. For the special town meeting, I know some of you were here in February and saw the clickers which you were all handed when you came in. We're going to address these for the annual meeting. If we have to do a count during the special meeting, we're just going to use the paper tickets like we've done in the past. So with that, I will remind you, if you have a cell phone, please silence it at this time. No one should speak unless recognized by the moderator. If you wish to speak on any of the articles, there is a microphone at the bottom of that aisle closest to the cafeteria. If you come to the microphone, you must give us your name and at the very least which side of town you live on. You don't have to give us your street address. You should have your vote ticket with you the first time that you come up to speak to show us that you are in fact a registered voter. For the special town meeting, all articles will be funded by free cash unless otherwise specified. That's a housekeeping item we have to address. And just for those who were here last year when we did this and may be wondering, at this moment, there is nobody in the cafeteria because we have not exceeded the capacity of this room. We are at something in the neighborhood of 250 people who are here at the moment. We were over 400 last year. That's for something that's coming up at 7:30. I know you all are very excited about. That's why you're all here. So with that, we will start the special town meeting. Article One, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $175,000, to be used for costs associated with repairs and maintenance of the Free Town Elementary School building, including engineering, design, construction, installation, and any incidental and related fees and expenses associated with these repairs. Repair projects to include but not be limited to: developing a feasibility study and engineering plans, replacing the boiler and roof, and upgrading the water filtration systems, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article One as read. Is there any discussion on Article One? Seeing none, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Article One is adopted unanimously. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article 15 of the June 20th, 2020 annual town meeting, which appropriated $550,000 for the purposes of designing and constructing a renovation and expansion of the Free Town Senior Center Building, to reallocate the entire $550,000 for the design, engineering, and constructions of improvements to the Council on Aging Building, including any incidental and related costs. Such improvements to include but are not limited to: adding a Lula lift or equivalent to the outside of the building for accessibility, and reconstructing the parking lot, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Two as read. Is there any discussion on Article Two? Hearing none, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Article Two is adopted unanimously. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $100,000, for design, engineering, and related services to undertake construction of a new salt shed for the Highway Department, including any incidental and related costs and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Highway Surveyor. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Three as read. Is there any discussion on Article Three? Hearing none, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Article Three is adopted unanimously. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $125,000, to fund feasibility studies, engineering, and construction of improvements and repairs to the parks and recreation areas throughout the town, including any incidental and related costs and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Four as read. Is there any discussion on Article Four? Hearing none, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Article Four is adopted unanimously. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $14,455.35, to purchase a new John Deere Z960M or similar lawnmower for use by the Highway Department, including any incidental and related costs and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Highway Surveyor. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Five as read. Is there any discussion on Article Five? Hearing none, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Article Five is adopted unanimously. Excuse me, Article Six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease all or a portion of the property, including the building situated thereon, located at 69 South Main Street, Unit 4, Asonet, Mass., formerly known as Patty's Hair Salon, to be utilized as an annex to the Town Hall. Such leasing to be undertaken in accordance with the provisions of General Law's Chapter 30b, Section 16, or any other enabling legislation for such period and upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen determine to be in the best interest of the town. And to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of $18,400, for payment of such lease or leases, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into such agreements and execute such instruments as may be necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Six as read. Is there any discussion on Article Six? Hearing none, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Article Six is adopted unanimously. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer, the sum of $82,000, for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new town vehicle for the Water and Sewer Department to be used for data acquisition and field maintenance, including any costs incidental and related thereto, to be funded from the Water and Sewer Reserve Fund, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Seven as read. Is there any discussion on Article Seven? Hearing none, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Article Seven is adopted unanimously. Article Eight, now there is a blank line on Article Eight, but we have a number now, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of $598,037.71. For the purpose of supplementing the Capital Stabilization Fund, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this be adopted in the number of $598,037.71. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Eight as read with the dollar figure of $598,037.71. Is there any discussion on Article Eight? Hearing none, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Article Eight is adopted unanimously. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn the special town meeting. Motion's made and seconded to adjourn the special town meeting, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Okay, the special town meeting is adjourned at 7:17 p.m. We began at 7:02 p.m. Fifteen minutes is not bad. It is 7:30. The appointed hour having arrived and a quorum being present, I will call the annual town meeting to order. We are still at the moment only using one room, just in case anybody's curious. I'll now call upon the town clerk to come forward to read the warning and the return.
To either of the constables of the town of Free Town, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Free Town who are qualified to vote in the elections and town affairs to meet at Aponoquit Regional High School, 100 Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, on Monday, the second day of June 2025 at 7:30 p.m. Then and thereto, act on the following articles. Warrant for the annual town meeting, Town of Free Town, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Monday, June 2nd, 2025, 7:30 p.m., Aponoquit Regional High School, Robert C. Falcon Auditorium, 100 Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the following places: the Asonet Post Office, the East Free Town Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store in Asonet, the Free Town Town Hall, the Free Town Communications Center, and Free Town Fire Rescue Station Number Three. Hear of, fail not, and make return of the original warrant with your doings thereon immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the town of Free Town, Massachusetts. Given under our hands and seal of the town of Free Town, this fifth day of May, Anno Domini 2025, the Town of Free Town Board of Selectmen, Trevor R. Matthews, Jared C. Zager, Carlos A. Lopes. Sorry about that, folks, I didn't print out the return. May 15th, 2025, to the town clerk, Town of Free Town, Massachusetts, I have this day posted attested copies of this warrant in the designated places described herein: in Asonet, the Asonet Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store, and the Free Town Town Hall; in East Free Town, the East Free Town Post Office, Fire Station Number Three, and the Free Town Communications Center. Signed, Scott M. Rose, Constable.
Excuse me. Okay, once again, if you have a cell phone, please set it to silent. No one should speak until recognized by the moderator. Again, the microphone is right down there. Nobody used it during the last half hour. Anyone coming to the microphone to speak must give their name and residence before speaking for the first time. Please, again, even though we will be using the clickers during this meeting if needed, bring up your vote ticket if you go to speak so that we know that you're a voter. For the annual town meeting, all of the articles will be funded from taxation unless otherwise specified. Now, nobody is particularly interested in Article One, we'll move on to something else. No. Article One, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Free Town Protective Bylaws, Chapter 300 zoning bylaws, Section 300-4.3, Plan Mixed Use Overlay District, PMUD, by deleting the existing Section 300-4.3 and replacing that with a new Section 300-4.3 Plan Mixed Use District, PMUD, the text of which is on file in the office of the town clerk and the planning board, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. The planning board does not recommend this article. And at this time, before we do anything else, we will hear from the planning board anything that they may have to tell us.
How's that? All right, I'm Chad Cavalo, I'm the chairman of the planning board. And on May 6th, we were presented with the public hearing for this proposed bylaw. After that public hearing, which I want to say, there was only about 15 people that showed up. So if we can get some more attendance, that'd be great. But the planning board voted five to zero not to recommend this article today. Reasons for, it doubles the current size of the zoning there, which, infrastructure issues. And of course, we looked into the total cost of if this plan were to be developed to 750 units, the impact financially it would have on the town. We recommend against it. I'll just add one more thing, that even though we're voting yes and no today, it won't be over today. But I think after this, we should probably reach out to the state. We have, I think it's eight units per acre right now is our current zoning. They want 15. But I think we're in a good spot to negotiate, and maybe we should start that process as soon as possible after we vote this down today. Thank you.
Okay, before we move on any further, we will need a motion to be made on this article. A motion is necessary. A motion to adopt as read would start the discussion. The motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article One as read. And again, it is necessary to have a motion before we can start the discussion. At this time, the floor would be open for discussion. What I am going to do is call upon any of the department heads, just because we did this last year, police, fire, anybody who may have anything to add about this article, who may have information to provide. I don't want to put you on the spot. If you don't, it's okay. Nancy, sure? No, oh, you don't, okay. Okay. Nancy is our new town planner. She will be here to answer any questions that anybody might have. And Deb is our town administrator. She has things to add now, I hope.
I'd like to just describe how we arrived here tonight. Many of you know that we... Can you hear me now? I just wanted to try to give you some background of how we got here tonight, and a little more information than I think we even had last year when we were here. This Communities Act, MBTA Communities Act, was enacted in 2021 by the Baker Administration, almost by a unanimous bipartisan vote of the government. So this requires that we enact zoning, that includes high-density zoning, the town. That's all it requires, is that we adopt this zoning. It is a law. It was mandated. And by not, wow, by not, I'm sorry, I don't know what's going on with that. By not adopting it, we will not be in compliance with the law. Milton sued, and this law was found constitutional and enforceable. So if we do not enact a zoning district, we may, they may enact a special council that will do it for us. By working with us, we have some control over the zoning that will be put in place. We can decide the location. We can decide the limited height. We can include a site plan review. We can include some of the stuff, mixed-use option, which is what we have in our current zoning proposal to you. If we do not enact something by July 14th, we will not be in compliance with the law, and we are not sure what the governor will do to make us comply. They may take away grants. And one of the things that we were looking at earlier is that, over the last three years, we've gotten $2.8 million in grant funding. We get grants every year, all different departments, police, fire, COA, library, transfer station, get grants. Those grants that we get every year are probably around $200,000, and it doesn't seem like a lot, but it adds up over time, and it's going to become expensive if we don't enact some high-density zoning. Now, I know, nobody likes to be told what they have to do, but it's similar to, somebody said to me, like the seatbelt law. It's a law. You have to wear your seatbelt. If you don't, you can be fined and ticketed. It's similar. It's a law. We have to comply. If we don't, we're going to suffer the consequences, which could be that they tell us where this zoning is going to be, or it also could be that they take away our funding. And there's actually more funding coming if you are an MBTA community. And we don't really know, they may sue us as well, so we may end up having to go to court. There's 177 communities that have to comply with MBTA Communities Act. 119, I think approximately, have approved this. So I just wanted to give you that. One of the reasons why we're here today is because we did turn it down, and we did get grant funding started to be taken away in January. And when the lawsuit came, the decision came from Milton's lawsuit, they needed to do some regulations. So we get a reprieve until this July 14th, as long as we agreed to bring this back before the residents of the town. So that is why, one of the main reasons it's here again, but I don't think it will be the last time you see this. The negotiation piece, you know, there's a settlement that Middleboro said they negotiated, a settlement. They really didn't. They just withdrew their lawsuit, and they were allowed to have more time to redo a district to comply with the zoning. So there's no negotiating out of what's required. What's required is that we create a high-density zoning district that equals at least 50 acres with at least 15 units per acre of density, close to the MBTA station, or at least a portion of it there. So that is required. Just because we enact the zoning doesn't mean that the houses will actually get built, but they could be. So I just wanted to give you some background, whether we vote yes or no, I believe in democracy. I believe everybody should have their vote, but I also believe you should have some of the information that you need to make an educated vote. And that's really all I had to say.
Is there any additional discussion on Article One? Feel free, if you have something to add to the conversation, come down or around and get in line, and we will get to each person in turn. Charlie, go ahead.
Charles Sullivan, 46 High Street. I think that people have a very big misconception about this. They think, and Mr. Moderator, you even said, oh, have the department heads talk about the cost. There is no plan. Am I correct, Ms. Petty? There's no, there's no one asking to come and build units at this time, correct? No. So there's no plan. All this is, is a plan to put aside land for multiple-family housing. Doesn't mean it's ever going to happen. Okay? How long, Mr. Cavalo, how long has there been the eight-unit area? 2012. Okay, he says 2012. Okay, so that's 13 years ago. 13 years ago, they, the town allowed eight units per acre. Now they're going to be asked to do 15. No one has come in and planned to build any multiple-family units. So I think that we have to realize, it's only, it's only a zoning plan. Actually, am I not correct that it's an overlay? So actually, tomorrow, an industrial concern could come in and plan for the land, and then there would never be any multiple-family housing there. So just understand, it's not a plan. People say, oh, we're going to have a big population increase. No, there's no plan. Actually, if you go by census statistics, there's 2.4, pardon me, 2.5 people per unit of housing. So this would mean that approximately 2,000 more people could move in, but not tomorrow, and not likely in the next 10 years. Let's be realistic. So I think people should understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning board, if you'd like to jump in?
I just kind of want to respond to that.
Sure.
Yeah, with eight units currently in a plan mixed-use development area, we don't have people jumping at it right now. But we're also doubling the occupancy if we are past this. And I don't think it'll be another 12 years before people start knocking on the door. If we pass this tonight, we'll be getting them soon, I would assume. That's double. You're going to double your money for the same amount of money. People will be knocking on the door. Currently, the town does have a 2-point whatever per household. We all know Lakeville, right? We go to school with them. Do all those apartments have only 2.2 people in them? So let's really talk realistic. It will be a significant growth, and probably at a good pace. It won't be there tomorrow when you wake up, but I'm sure it'll be coming quickly if we approve it.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Hi, Breida McCarty, Asonet. I just, what you were saying before about not having anyone come and develop the land, that was true for a long time, but now we have the T. We have a huge population increase in the state of Massachusetts. The T is planned to be within a half mile of this zone because people need to walk to the T so that they can take the T to work in Boston. It's going to be a huge influx of people, and my guess would be more than 2.5 per unit. 750 units, I mean, that's going to be a huge impact on our school system. It's going to have a huge impact on our police, our fire, our EMTs. I mean, these are all things that we're going to have to pay for ourselves. So that quickly offsets any kind of funding that's going to be taken away from Beacon Hill. I mean, we know how much the fire station has cost, and that's a heck of a lot more than $2 million in funding that we've gotten from the state. I mean, we're paying twice that already. So I don't know how the threat of funding, and even the tax, the threat of suing us, is really a threat that we should be more worried about than what's going to happen to our town if 750 new families move in. I mean, that's what we need to worry about. That's the character of our town just gone overnight. It's just, for kids that are in schools, it's their, it's their academic programs, it's their athletic programs, it's their arts programs. We fund all of this. They don't know what we need in Beacon Hill. We do. So that's my thing.
I happen to be a little short today. Thank you. Hi, my name is Lex Johansson. I live on Mill Street in Asonet. I'm 19 years old, and this is my second time coming here to speak on this topic. I want to make it clear that I'm not exactly pleased that I have to be here once again, but I am proud of the turnout. As it stands, the town of Free Town does not have the capacity for these new homes that the zoning would open up. Whether we have gotten any balls for the zoning that we already have, the new MBTA will be opening up so many more doors that we didn't already have in the first place, and this isn't exactly a good thing. I want to remind you that we do not have a grocery store. We do not have a hospital, and we do not have the school capacity for these new people that we would acquire in such a short period of time if we were to get all these new homes. And I also want to remind you, it was a point last time that somebody brought up that it could be housing that would be disability housing or 50-plus. It would most likely not be. It would not have any regulations on the restrictions on how many houses generally could be built. There's an estimate, but there's no regulation. And it would most likely not be 2.5 people per house, especially with the MBTA. It would swiftly and surely gentrify our small neighborhood. The people who live in Asonet live here for a reason. There is space and privacy. The cost of living in Asonet is already rising with general inflation. Imagine what it would do to our town with such a large increase of capacity and population. I want to remind you that it would, the rapid growth of the residents would severely affect the flow of our town and the dynamic of the small quaint village of Asonet that we know and love. It's small, and we like it that way. Whether we've already had offers for the construction or not, with the new MBTA, those would roll in very, very quickly. It happened in Quincy, and it'll happen here. There were new homes built, I believe it was in Quincy, remind me if not? The same situation with the high-capacity housing, and the population of Quincy almost doubled. So I strongly implore you to vote no on Article One, for my sake and the future of the high schoolers here and all throughout Free Town. Thank you.[1798.64][1798.64] Thank you.
Me on my technical.
I'm not either.
Great. All right, well.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Duer, Asonet. So I just have a couple of issues and concerns. So I'm a little confused about why the Planning Board was presented this last time. Obviously, they were for it last time, and now there's this switch. So I want to understand why the Planning Board is changing their recommendation. Last time, they said they had to recommend it, part of following the law. I also am confused about why people don't think that new people coming in won't be paying taxes. So you're acting like people are gonna come in and there's not gonna be any revenue source from those people. And I just feel like there's a sense of unwelcomingness that is kind of sad to see. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
I'll answer the first one. Last year, we created a different bylaw at the Planning Board level, and we recommended it be on the warrant so everyone can vote for it for a first time. Didn't mean we personally wanted it to. I voted no against it last year as well. Also, part of the Planning Board, I recommend that it came to the public to be voted on. That was our recommendation last year. So this year, we're not recommending it because we just did this last year. People don't want it, and I think personally, on the Planning Board level, we haven't heard from the state at all. We have a bylaw that, twelve years ago, the members of that board worked with state agencies and were actually, from what I'm told, were praised for it. So now they're doubling it. There was always the potential to move the gold post, but they picked up and moved the whole field, and we're just trying to bring it back in. So we're gonna have to negotiate with them whether they say they're not gonna negotiate at all. That's what's gonna end up happening. It's a cookie kind of law, and they need to, you know, do the right thing by each town that's affected by it. The second, I can answer the second one, too. I don't think this town is unwelcoming, but people will come in and, of course, pay taxes. But I have three children in my household that go to the schools. It's about eighteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars for a child to go to school. I have three of them. I think I pay a little under five thousand in taxes. So that's a big swing if we're just getting units in that will have children and end up eighteen-thousand dollars a kid for a couple grand in taxes. And then there was another question. If a big commercial building wanted to go there tomorrow, we'd probably hurry up and rush that through so we can fill up that area.
Courtney, go ahead.
Thank you, Courtney Bright, Manasonet. I have a question, and our town administrator was mentioning figures about the grants that we've won, and also that there was a lawsuit with Milton, and I'm wondering if this doesn't pass and we have to fight a lawsuit and we lose the grants, do we know the impact on the individual household or taxpayer? Do we have any estimates for the legal fees and the grants that we'll lose?
Yeah, I don't know that I can answer what it will cost to litigate, you know? It's not inexpensive, and so that's gonna be too determined. And even with the grants, we know that they're going to take away our grants, but we don't know to the extent. And the yearly grants run around two-hundred-thousand dollars, but like I said, we've gotten an additional two-point-five million dollars in the last three years, and we have a lot of grants. One of the biggest is the grant for the library construction, which I would estimate at five or six million dollars that we will lose. There is also, there are grants that we have in the works for working on roadways and stuff that we will lose if we are to get them. We've applied for them, we haven't gotten notice that we're gonna get them, but that we will also lose. I don't think the pain will be felt the immediate year. I don't think it'll be next year, all of a sudden, you know, our budgets go haywire. But as each year goes and we lose less and less funding, or we lose more and more funding, it's going to become an issue. I think that on the horizon, our budgets are gonna get tighter and tighter and tighter. We've been saying this, but, you know, being a member of the BP District is going to get increasingly more expensive as more students go there. That is gonna put a large strain on our budgets and just raises and whatnot, and even our retirement system has gone up quite a bit, and our health insurance. So I really think that this may not be an immediate impact, but it's certainly gonna be strongly felt in a couple of years. And of course, the governor is incentivizing communities that have passed this, right? She's gonna give them the bulk of the grant funds. So you're gonna see it over time, maybe not immediately. I think the other thing to keep in mind when you're thinking about this is that it's a law. They made us think that we have some say in it. We really don't. What we have a say in is where it goes, whether we have site plan review, whether we can use, do mixed use or not, whether we want to make it have an affordability piece to it. But it is the law. We will get it. If we don't use our own input to where we go it, they're gonna tell us where, and they're gonna tell us what we can and cannot do. It's the law. So I think that's, for me, that was the turning point when I realized, this is a law. We gotta do it one way or the other. We can do it the easier way, which is have some control over it, or we can wait and they can tell us exactly what we're gonna do and where we're gonna do it. I don't know if that answered your question, but...
Ralph Smith of Livingston, Bay Shores. I was just gonna bring up, who has actually gone down the street where this land is and looked it over? You drive down the street, you see Stop and Shop, you see the Sturridge Place, you see Valtran, you see Copat. Who was gonna build residences in this area? You know, who was gonna do it? You know, I feel that it could happen, but this is like years away. Because, you know, if I was gonna rent an apartment or buy a condo or place, are you gonna, and plus, you got the train going by night and day. So, you know, to me, it's like, you know, I say we vote yes on this, just for the fact that it's probably gonna be years away, if ever. Thank you.
Abby Michaels, Free Town. Just a question. Do we have the ability to say that X amount of the housing has to be senior housing? Do we have that option?
No.
No. So, okay, that was just my question. That's it.
Can be no age restrictions.
Chris Dudley, Asonet. I just want to echo something Deb just mentioned. If we vote no to this, that means we're giving up our freedom to choose where it goes and how it gets implemented. Because if we vote no, the state's just gonna come in and mandate us to do it anyways, and they're gonna make the decisions on where it goes and how we implement it, right? Is that kind of my understanding?
That's the threat, right?
Yep.
They're gonna appoint special counsel that can tell us what we're gonna get.
So if we vote no, we're giving up our grant funding, we're probably gonna get sued and have to do it anyways. Okay. Thank you, that was all.
John Virelli, East Free Town. Again, I wanted to echo the comments made by our town administrator. Like, I get that people have a lot of feelings about our town and how it's an idyllic New England town, and we like it that way, and I understand that, I respect that, I admire that. I get it, I truly do. But I think people are under the mistaken impression that if we vote no tonight, that this just goes away and you can all go home, and that's never gonna get developed, and nothing can be further from the truth. That's just wrong. This is going to happen. The only choice we have in front of us tonight is how we want to do this. So again, I just urge you to vote yes because it's just good common sense, and it's just taking your feelings out of it.
My name's Noah Roseman, Nineteen Nick Drive, East Free Town. Sam Downs is there? Hey, hey there, Sam, am I right? I'm here to talk to you this evening because, having been raised right next door in Rochester, you probably know that whether you go into East Free Town or to Rochester, it kind of just leaks into each other, and as my mom always said, that we live in God's country, and that's how I've always felt. And I say that for a reason, because I very well know that we're not here tonight to talk about the horns. But I want to make a parallel with what we've heard here tonight versus the horns. We've been told that land might not be developed for years. We don't know when that might happen. Might be a year, might be in ten years, but the reason why I want to make a parallel to the horns is because when we bought our home on Nineteen Nick Drive, we saw the tracks. We knew the tracks were there, but it was the freight train that occasionally went by, and we thought, nothing's gonna come of that. It'll never happen. We don't have to worry. But now, my wife and I, we teach, we're in the Brockton School System, and we need to wake up every morning to teach kids how to read. But we're woken up at four-forty AM by the blasting horns. So it happened. It did happen. The freight tracks became much more than that in only nine years after we bought our home. And those nine years went by very fast. So I'd just like us to consider that that land that's open, whether they say it's a law or not, in God's country, they can't tell us how to live our lives. So that's just, what I wanted you to hear, that it did happen, only nine years later that went by in a heartbeat. Thank you.
Hi, Cara Machesi. I recently moved back into town, so bought my first home here, okay? But I grew up in this neighborhood. Actually, my grandma's house is the one right next to you, Zega, the big red house that everybody now knows about. I can't even believe I'm standing up here talking, because I was gonna sit there, but then I started stewing, and everybody keeps talking about, we had a few people talking about, like, oh, well, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, and it's ten years. Well, I don't have children, I have a stepson. That's ten years for him, and he's only gonna be in his twenties, okay? Like, everybody who's not so worried about it is on, you know, on the back end of their life, but we have children in this town growing up who don't want to live in the city. This is why we stay here, okay? And then, second to that, is I keep hearing about, well, it's the law and it's mandated. Well, I work in prison, okay? You know who gets a lot of stuff on our tax dime, okay? Criminals. Okay? The state of Massachusetts loves its criminals, and we want to talk about mandates? You want to know who didn't get mandated to take COVID vaccines? Criminals, okay? So we can keep talking about how, you know, it's a mandate and it's the law. Well, there's a lot of people in prison getting a lot of things on our dime who broke the law, and there is no consequence for that, okay? My point is that we, as a town, we can come together and make a decision about, we can deal with the law. That's why it changes, okay? That's why the governor changes every few years. We can, I just, we know it's a law, and we will figure it out, and that's why law keeps getting rewritten and reset, and I just want people to think about the long run. And maybe it's not tomorrow, but like you said, it's coming down the line for your children, for their children, like, it's, I don't know. Again, I didn't have anything planned, and I apologize, but thank you.
This, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Caroline Sadler from the East Free Town side of town. I grew up on the South Shore when the commuter rail came in, and I feel like even without those sort of mandates at the time, because I know they're coming up for those communities also, the towns are no longer the small farm towns that they once were, and that's exactly what we're seeing here. And yes, although we will be out of compliance, the more towns that choose to be out of compliance will help to make the movement to really sort of represent what we are as a community and what we want to keep our town. It might sound unwelcoming, but in reality, you know, we all moved places that have yards. We all, we're fortunate enough to be able to, but, you know, we all moved to Free Town, not the towns surrounding it, for a reason. And I think, you know, as you see that, the more you need to think about what brought you to Free Town or Asonet, or kept you there in the first place.
I started to yell, it came back on. I heard a motion to call the question, and I heard a second. What I'm going to do, the two folks who are at the microphone right now, I'm gonna let them speak, and then we are going to move on to the question. So they have been waiting patiently, I'm gonna allow that, and then we'll be done with the conversation.
Okay. Hi, it's me again, Lex Johansson, I live on Mill Street. I want to remind everyone that even if it won't be developed for five, ten, fifteen years, you have to think about people like me, who will be living here for the rest of my life. I'm only nineteen. You have to think about my peers, you have to think about my classmates. You should also probably think about the young students who are going through the school system right now, and their education will be uprooted and disrupted by, example, a redevelopment of the high school, elementary school, middle school, intermediate, and how the capacity would change their education. You also have to think, maybe it's not about inclusivity or welcoming other people into our town, because I'm pretty sure most of us are happy to do something like that. I included, but it isn't about that. It's about financial literacy and how much all of us will be paying with an influx of people in such a short amount of time. Not only that, the MBTA, again, with the development, if the development is double-sized, which this is what the vote is about, I'm sure that contractors would want to jump on that opportunity. I heard someone say about who would want to build, you know, apartments in that area. When they have the option to do so to a much bigger audience, they will, and I know they will. They've done it all across Massachusetts now. Gentrification is running rapid in Massachusetts of small, little towns that most of us want to stay, small and little. We've moved here for a reason, we stay here for a reason. And of course, I'm sure a bunch of other people wouldn't mind living in larger areas with larger capacities or larger population, but that's not why we live here, and I'm pretty sure most of us know that. They want to scare us into doing this. They want to pressure us with threats of taxation or fines or taking away our grants. Why can't we put our foot down? Last year, I saw a group of almost four-hundred people, five-hundred people, sit here and agree that we are gonna put our foot down and we're going to keep our post, and they can't tell us what to do. What's happened? What's changed? The fear of an increased price bracket? We're already fearing that in the first place. So I want to just plead you all today again to vote no.
Nancy, when we get to the Planning Board article, I want you to ask for a raise for the microphone assistance. Sir?
Paul Lamro, Asonet. Do we have any data on what the negative consequences have been for towns who chose not to follow the law? I mean, it seems to me we need to have some kind of idea as to what is this gonna cost us either way? People have thrown out, oh, it's gonna cost this, it's gonna cost that. Have there been any, do we know of towns who have chosen not to follow the law, what kinds of consequences have they faced? kinds of consequences have they faced?
I believe after Milton's lawsuit, and they determined that while it was constitutional to, you know, demand this zoning, that they hadn't done the regulations, so that they gave everybody a reprieve, many communities a reprieve until July 14th to come into compliance. We were only technically out of compliance for about two weeks, and they began taking our grant monies away. So to say that I can 100% quantify it for you right now, I cannot, and I'm not sure other towns can either, because they're in the same boat, they get until July 14th to come into compliance. But we'll soon see that, you know, over the next few months.
Okay, we previously had a motion to call the question, and a second. We will vote on that motion now. This is formally the vote to call the question. A motion to call the question, as I said before, immediately ends discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the majority has voted in favor of calling the question. At this time, we move immediately to voting on the question, the main question that is before us. The motion that is on the floor at this time is to adopt Article One as read. This requires a two-thirds vote. We're going to try it as a voice vote, I think we're going to end up going to the clickers. All in favor of Article One?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
We're going to go to the clickers. I will tell you, in my estimation, I think the noes outweigh the yeses, but we will go to the clickers to be sure. So the question before you, again, it is a yes or no question. On your clickers, yes or no? You should see the okay and a number light up. It was a 10-second vote. All, all the clicker votes will be 10 seconds. Time is up, and we have two, so it is defeated. 99 to 162. In the back. Motion has been made and seconded to reconsider Article One. This, as we discussed before, is a procedural matter to decide whether or not this is dead for the night. All those in favor of reconsideration?
Point of order.
Oh, hold on one second, a point of order, sir. I'm sorry, you're correct. Kevin, were you on the prevailing side?
I was.
Kevin was.
I was.
If there was anybody in the room that didn't recognize your voice, I'd be more concerned about that. All right, so the motion before us again is to reconsider Article One. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The motion to reconsider is defeated. Again, we do not allow repetitive motions to reconsider, so unless somebody comes running into the room waving a piece of paper saying, there's something we all didn't know five minutes ago, there will be no further voting on Article One this evening. We will take now just a two-minute recess. Last year, a lot of people got up and left after this. I'm not encouraging you to do that, I'd encourage you to stay, but just in case anybody was planning to leave, we will take a two-minute recess to allow for that. Okay, folks, now that we're all in the Price is Right mindset, we're going to move on to the budget. I haven't read it yet. You can do that. All right, Kevin has made a motion, we're back in session, by the way, Kevin has made a motion to not read the budget, and somebody did second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Majority has voted not to read through the whole budget, okay. If you have your budget packet, you will notice that what the departments have recommended is the same as what the finance, what the departments, excuse me, have requested, is the same as what the Finance Committee has recommended, if I'm not mistaken, for all of the budgets. I don't think there was any deviation, and I'm getting the nod from the Finance Committee Chairman. So what I will do, I mean, that was a valid motion that was made second and voted, I will give everybody a minute to just kind of skim the budget and see if there are any that you have questions about. Our department heads will be perfectly happy to ask, answer any questions you may have. We don't want to cut off anybody's ability to ask questions, but not reading it will save a heck of a lot of time. This is when we need the Jeopardy music. Stick on the game show theme this evening. A motion has been made and seconded from the back of the room to adopt the budget as presented, which would be in the amounts requested by the departments and recommended by the Finance Committee. If there is anybody who has questions, comments, or concerns on the budget, now is your opportunity. Please, jump up and down, wave your arms, or make your way to the microphone as fast as you possibly can. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The budget has been adopted unanimously in possibly the fastest time that that has ever taken. You ruin this, because usually after about 45 minutes, I get to say, and that's only Article One, but I don't get to do that now. It was Article Two, that's true, that's even worse. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation, oh, I'm sorry. Just so everybody knows, that was Article Two, because the vote was to not read the budget, it wasn't to not read the article. Article Two was to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate and/or transfer such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the town charges for the fiscal year 2026 vis general government, public safety, health and human services, public works, education, culture and recreation, interest and principal debt, townwide fueling and unclassified, cert pet assessment, retirement, insurances, Medicare, and transfers, capital, equipment, capital building, and other property improvements, and/or take any action relative thereto. It was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, it required a majority vote, you already did that, we're going to move on. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by Chapter 41, Section 108, and Chapter 71, Section 52 of the general laws as amended for the fiscal year 2026 and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, it requires a majority vote. The requests and recommendations are once more the same, I will read them once. Moderator, $185 per meeting. Board of Selectmen, $6,000 per member per year. Town Clerk, $79,766.26 per year. Board of Assessors, $5,000 per member per year. Tree Warden, $25 per hour. Highway Surveyor, $90,408 per year. Freetown Lakeville Regional School Committee members of Freetown, $1,106 per member per year. Water and Sewer Commissioners, $500 per member per year. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Three as read, which is in the requested and recommended figures. Is there any discussion on Article Three? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Three is adopted unanimously. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a tax-exempt lease purchase or TLP financing agreement with All American Investment LLC to acquire and equip police cruisers that may be financed by the issuance of debt for a term up to the useful life of the property being three years, and to be procured as determined by the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), and further, that the sum required for the first-year payment of such agreement be separately identified and raised and appropriated in the capital budget section of the omnibus budget for fiscal year 2026, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Chief of Police, it requires a two-thirds vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Four as read, is there any discussion on Article Four? When it references the omnibus budget, that was the thing we did at lightning speed a couple of moments ago. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Four is adopted unanimously. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to approve the sum of $1,999,942.77 to operate the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2026, with an appropriation for the following direct expenses: Personnel, $165,383; Expenses, $1,745,559.77; For a total of $1,910,942.77 in the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund; And the sum of $80,000 for indirect costs be appropriated in the general fund as part of the omnibus budget, with all costs totaling $1,999,942.77; And supported with $0 from certified retained earnings and with $1,990,942.77 from Water Sewer Enterprise receipts, and/or take any other action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Five as read, is there any discussion on Article Five? Tim came in right at the right moment, but he's got nothing, he's waving off. Okay. All in favor of Article Five?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Five is adopted unanimously. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to establish the following fiscal year spending limits for each revolving fund established under Article 29 of the general bylaws, and/or take any action relative thereto. For the Board of Selectmen for the annual town report, $3,000; For the Police Department for exams, $5,000; For the Police Department for the firearm safety course, $10,000; For the Board of Assessor, for the Board of Selectmen, excuse me; For Long Pond, $29,000; For the Vaccine Revolving Fund, $6,500; For Community Programs, $6,000. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Six as read, is there any discussion on Article Six? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Six is adopted unanimously. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22j, as inserted by Chapter 178 of the Acts of 2024, and to determine that the amount of the additional exemption allowed certain veterans qualifying for exemption under Clauses 22, 22a, 22b, 22c, and 22e shall be 100%, all to be effective as of July 1st, 2025, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Assessors, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Seven as read, is there any discussion on Article Seven? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Seven is adopted unanimously. Article Eight, there has been some additional wording inserted into middle, into the middle, excuse me, of Article Eight. As I read Article Eight, I will highlight when we get to the additional words, and at the end, I will ask for the motion be to adopt as amended. Article Eight is to see if the town will vote to transfer from the stabilization fund the sum of $2,550,000 to purchase a parcel of land located on Bullock Road, East Freetown, identified as Assessor's Parcel 239-038, including any costs incidental and related thereto, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen, and this is the new words, to acquire said land by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain for general municipal purposes on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems appropriate, and to enter into such agreements and execute such documents or instruments as are necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article, and/or take any action relative thereto. And I'll read it one more time because of the additional language. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the stabilization fund the amount of, the sum of $2,550,000 to purchase a parcel of land located on Bullock Road, East Freetown, identified as Assessor's Parcel 239-038, including any costs incidental and related thereto, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire said land by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain for general municipal purposes on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems appropriate, and to enter into such agreements and execute such documents or instruments as are necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, it requires a two-thirds vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Eight as amended. Is there any discussion on Article Eight? All right, we will ask that to our accountant, the question is, what is the total amount? Now, we have two stabilization funds, we have the general and the capital, are you looking for both? Both, thank you.
One second.
All right. Matt has got out a piece of paper and a pencil? He's trying to figure this out.
All right, we have $3,949,936.51 in regular stabilization, and $6,348,008.07 in capital stabilization. And that's without including the article earlier tonight.
Okay, that article at the special town meeting added a little over 500,000 to the capital stabilization fund, which if I'm not mistaken, Matt, that wiped out all the free cash that we had, is that?
Yes.
Okay. Charlie, please.
My first question would be, have you had a survey of the land? Part of my question is this, the assessors' records show 33 acres, and this article explanation says 32. Just for the beginning, that's one question I would have.
All right, looks like we have one of our selectmen coming up.
Thank you. So this is all in initial stages.
Hold on, Jared, pretend everybody doesn't know who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jared Zegar, Selectmen, Ansonet. So this is all still in the very initial stages. What we've done is heard the outcry from the residents to purchase a piece of, or have a piece of land in the center of the town. We've found this piece of property. We're basically in the initial stages with an engineer, no official survey has been done yet. There's still a lot of things that would need to be done in order for us to effectuate the sale completely. Funding of this project, of this parcel of land does not necessarily mean that we will 100% purchase it, because there's still some outlying things that we really want to wrap ourselves around to make sure the piece of property, if purchased, is a, a good piece of property, excuse me, a good piece of property to have, so.
Thank you. So if I'm to understand, you do not have an agreement with the property owners? You, you, you have no purchase and sale or anything like that?
We have a purchase and sale sign, but there is clauses in it that we are allowed to back out if obviously this funding doesn't happen.
Jared, just repeat that part on the microphone, please.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
So, so we have a purchase and sales that we have signed with the landowner, but there's a lot of clauses that are in it. Obviously, if we don't gain funding tonight, then we back out of it. If, you know, there was, there was determined that there was a lot of wetlands or different things like that that happened that would make it not feasible for us to have, then at that point, we can also back out of it. So we do, we do have a lot of clauses into it, and I'm not sure, Debbie, if you have anything you want to add to this?
First of all, the owner had the property surveyed before they offered it to us, so the survey has been done. They, 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 they did that before that was even signed. The purchase and sale agreement has been signed, but again, we can back out for any reason that the Selectmen decide to back out. We did some preliminary engineering, but before we were going to spend any more money on engineering, it made sense to see if the public was interested in having an appetite to spend this kind of money for centrally-located land right across from the elementary school. So one of the things that we constantly hear is, you know, everything is in, in the Ansonet and of things, and, you know, we're trying to get a new library COA building, and we don't really have any availability of land in that existing campus. So this is an ideal location for this piece of land, but yes, some preliminary engineering has been done, but we don't want to spend too much money to make sure that the town is willing to spend part of their savings on purchasing this land. I'm not sure if that answers your question, Charlie.
Okay. My next question would be, have you had it appraised?
I didn't hear you what?
Have you had it appraised?
We did not have it appraised, it was appraised by the seller, but we have not had it appraised.
Okay. My, my concern, I, I don't have a problem with the idea of buying a piece of property to use in this area, but the price would be more than $70,000 an acre. And I have not seen in my, a little bit of research I did on sales of open land, anywhere near that price per acre for any sales in the last five years in Freetown. The, the closest that I got was a piece on Keene Road, where Keene Road makes its 90-degree turn. It was about five acres, it sold- It sold for about fifty-nine thousand dollars per acre. The thing that was interesting in that was it had quite a bit of road frontage, and the people who bought it and developed it did not need to have a subdivision. They could do a four A. I, like I said, I have a problem with, with spending so much money for this land. I, I would say about half the price, but that's just my interest, knowledge. I think that it, we should, actually, we should have several appraisals before we go forward with making a decision on this. Thank you.
Yep. There is approximately, I believe, five, there could be five four A's on this property. There is a lot of frontage as well.
Nick Flanders, he's Freetown. My main question on this, this is a pretty big piece of land. Is there any intent to use this for anything besides town infrastructure? Is this going to be turned in? Are we going to put buildings up and lease it out to shops? I mean, it's my first time at a town meeting, but just seeing what's going, living on that side of town, are we going to have our first stoplight in town if we're putting many, much more infrastructure? I mean, you've got buses coming in and out of there. It's, it's a pretty busy area, so it's just.
The intent is to purchase the land to build a new building. That is the only, the only plan at this moment, and of course, building a new building is a whole nother town meeting, right, and a whole nother vote, and a, and a whole nother funding source. So that's not even a guarantee. It's just that it's an ideal location for future expansion, and we don't know what that looks like, but, but it will be for municipal purposes. If that answers the question.
Has there been any research into whether or not the individual selling it would subdivide or divide the lot any smaller? Do we need the full thirty-two acres to support the town's needs?
We, we approached the seller, and we asked for this parcel in particular because we, we are going to need all of it, I think, eventually.
Okay.
But, so the answer is no. We haven't talked about subdividing it down to smaller amounts.
Are there any additional questions or discussion on Article Eight? Okay, hearing none. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed? We will go to the clickers, because that sounds like it should have been a yes, but you never know. So we have ten seconds to vote using the clickers. Again, you should see an okay and a little number in the window if your clicker is working. Okay, the voting is closed. Let's see the results. The article has failed to reach the two-thirds majority. We have one hundred thirteen yes and seventy-five no. That does not meet the two-thirds majority necessary, so the article has been defeated. Article Nine. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars from a special revenue receipt reserved for appropriation account known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three F and Three-quarters, for the purpose of funding video service agreements and updating necessary equipment for off-site meetings, including any incidental and related costs and expenses and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Nine as read. Is there any discussion on Article Nine? Hearing none, all in favor?
All opposed.
Article Nine is adopted unanimously. Article Ten, excuse me. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of ten thousand dollars for extraordinary property maintenance in various cemeteries, including tree removal, monument repair, and, and, I'm sorry, the screen for me just turned into a clock. I got very confused right then. For extraordinary property maintenance in various cemeteries, including tree removal, monument repair, and any costs incidental and related thereto, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Cemetery Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Ten as read. Is there any discussion on Article Ten? Somebody has stood up, I don't know. No, okay. Hearing none, all in favor?
All opposed.
Article Ten is adopted unanimously. Article Eleven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds and/or borrow the sum of one hundred fifty thousand dollars for purposes of financing the following water pollution abatement facility projects, repair, replacement, and/or upgrade of septic systems pursuant to agreements between the Board of Health and residential property owners for repayment of project and financing costs by such property owners, including without limitation the payment of all costs thereof as defined in Section One of Chapter Twenty-nine C of the Massachusetts General Laws, and to meet with appropriation. The treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow such sums of money under General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, or any other enabling authority, which amount may be borrowed through the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust Community Septic Management Program, offered through the Clean Water Trust or otherwise, and further, to authorize the select board to take any other action necessary to carry out this project or take any other action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Health. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made in article, uh, motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Eleven as read. Is there any discussion on Article Eleven? Hearing none, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Article Eleven has been adopted unanimously. Article Twelve. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of eighteen thousand four hundred five dollars for the costs associated with active shooter training of police officers and firefighters and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the chief of police. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Twelve as read. Is there any discussion on Article Twelve? Hearing none, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Article Twelve is adopted unanimously. Article Thirteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of thirty thousand dollars to be added to the Conservation Land Fund established under Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section Eight C, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Conservation Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Fourteen, uh, excuse me, Article Thirteen as read. Is there any discussion? Article Thirteen. Hearing none, all in favor?
All opposed.
Article Thirteen is adopted unanimously. Article Fourteen, for real this time. All public meetings of the Finance Committee, in person, hybrid, or full remote, will be recorded, both audio and visual, by the public meeting entity. If a public meeting is held fully remote, as provided by law, requirements for audiovisual recording remain. This was submitted by petition. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Fourteen as read. Is there any discussion on Article Fourteen? We will hear from Town Council.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to note for town meeting that with respect to the, the article here and the next one as well, this isn't something town meeting can mandate. It's, it, the outcome of the vote will be essentially a sense of the meeting vote, but this is essentially controlled by the open meeting law and the boards that essentially are operating under that. So I just wanted to make sure people understood that. So town meeting does not have the authority, the legal authority, to require what these next two articles are essentially requiring. So if approved, it essentially just counts as a sense of the meeting. Essentially, what that means is it's what town meeting would like to see happen, but it's not something that town meeting can require to happen. Does that clarify things for folks?
Okay, is there any additional discussion on Article Fourteen? Hearing none, all in favor? I'm going to judge that the majority voted yes on that. Article Fifteen, second verse, same as the first. All public meetings of the Board of Selectmen, in person, hybrid, or full remote, will be recorded, both audio and visual, by the public meeting entity. If a public meeting is held, held fully remote, as provided by law, requirements for audiovisual recording remain. This article was submitted by petition, requires a majority vote, and the Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Fifteen as read. Is there any discussion on Article Fifteen? Hearing none, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed. Once again, I will say Article Fifteen was adopted by the majority. Article Sixteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of one hundred ten thousand dollars to purchase that parcel of land on the east side of Richmond Road, shown as Lot One-eleven on Assessor's Map Two-O-seven, being forty-two-point-six-six acres and known as a portion of the Richmond Homestead, and further, to assign the care, custody, management, and control of the parcel as follows. A, approximately thirty-eight-point-three-six acres, shown as conservation restriction and access easement within Lot Three, on plan recorded with the Bristol County Registry of Deeds, Fall River District, at Plan Book One-thirty-seven, page seventy-one, to be held and managed by the Conservation Commission for open space preservation and passive recreation under the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section Eight C, and also under Article Ninety-seven of the Amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution. And B, approximately four-point-three-zero acres, being the remaining portion of said Lot Three, not covered by the conservation restriction and access easement, to be held and managed by the Historical Commission, under the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section Eight D, and also under Article Ninety-seven of the Amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by petition. It requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee does not recommend this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Sixteen as read. Is there any discussion on Article Sixteen?
I come as chairman of the Conservation Commission, and my first comment would be that if people wanted to petition and have the town purchase land via the Conservation Commission, that they'd come before the Conservation Commission with their idea. Okay, that's the first thing. The other thing is that this land is already preserved under something that is not in relation to the Town of Freetown nor the Conservation Commission. So the land, you're not, by paying one hundred and ten thousand dollars for this piece of land, you're not conserving it. It is already conserved, to my, to the best of my knowledge. All right, just so everyone knows that. Thank you.
Abby Michaels again. I just was wondering why the Finance Committee did not recommend this.
We just didn't feel that one hundred and ten thousand dollars was well-spent that way. The Conservation Commission, if they did want this land, has their own account that we just previously put some more money into, and they, if Conservation Commission wanted the land, they do have an account for that.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion on Article Sixteen? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Wow. All opposed?
Yeah.
Let's say Article Sixteen was defeated. Article Seventeen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of two hundred fifty thousand dollars to reconstruct the sidewalk on North Main Street, from Water Street North to Twenty-seven North Main Street, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by petition. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee does not recommend this article. Think I heard it. Second, motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Seventeen as read. Is there any discussion on Article Seventeen? Nope, somebody is coming.
Yeah, Dave Levek, I do live on North Main Street. This article would not directly affect me, because I live on the opposite side of the street from the sidewalk, but on the Fourth of July, anybody and everybody who has been to the fireworks knows that parking is a mess, traffic is a mess, and living on North Main Street at Twenty-four, I watch all afternoon families in minivans and with handicap stickers driving at two miles an hour up the street, because they are just praying for a parking space to be open. When I see that, and I see somebody that's really in need, I try to hail them and get them to park in my driveway, in my, in my spot. I can only do that so many times. That sidewalk is a mess. It's a hazard. It has, across from me, it has a tree that was recently taken down, the stump is at least this big around, and essentially takes up the entire sidewalk. There's about six inches of pavement in that sidewalk that is accessible. So I see people driving up the street, parking a half a mile up the street, and walking down with their children, with their children in their backpacks and in their cool, with their coolers, on the Fourth of July, and I think, this is not the worst part. The worst part is it's going to be dark when they have to hike a half a mile up the street. You're at the corner, they've got the lights, it's great. You're a hundred yards away, and it is pitch dark. We do not have streetlights, as you know. So these families are walking, hiking up and down the street after the forest light. It's a hazard to the town, not to mention that it's North Main Street in our town. It's Main Street in our town. It should look presentable. It has frost heaves, it has obstructions. For years, it had an abandoned mailbox, sticking, just the post, sticking up from the sidewalk, which I ran into at least a couple of times in the dark. So I would like to ask the Finance Committee if any of the people on the Finance Committee have attempted to walk that sidewalk in the last six months. That's all I have to say.
Okay. I'll start with Margaret, and if anybody else from the Finance Committee is here.
I personally am unaware of what that sidewalk looks like, but I feel like it needs to go through the Highway Department first, as they're the ones that would need to do that work on it, and they would come to us with a request for the money to do the, the repair work.
Are there any other Finance Committee members who are present who would like to speak on, on the sidewalk? Just in general, are there any other Finance Committee members present? Okay, there are a few. Is there any further discussion on Article Seventeen? Hearing none, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed? Man your clickers. Question before you again is, do we repair the sidewalk on North Main Street? The voting is open. It will be open for ten seconds. Some of you may have been curious during the night, by the way, just for the heck of it, zoning articles require a two-third, and buying land requires a two-third. That's why you've seen that a few times. Okay, the voting is closed. We'll take a look. The, ooh, close. The article has been defeated sixty-nine to eighty-seven. Article Eighteen has been withdrawn. This brings us to Article Nineteen. Article Nineteen is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, oh, this has a blank, you'll hear a number, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of ninety-nine thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and seventeen cents, ninety-nine thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and seventeen cents, to fund and implement the first-year cost items associated in the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Freetown and the Freetown Police Association, covering the period of July first, two thousand twenty-five, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight, as on file with the town clerk, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article be funded in the amount of ninety-nine thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Nineteen as read, including the sum of- Is there any discussion on Article 19? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 19 has been adopted unanimously. Motion is made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, by the majority, we adjourn at 8:56. Thank you all for coming out. We will do this again another time.